And why don't we start?
Streaming and recording.
We are welcome to our audience out there.
Yeah.
We will start with the privilege of floor number one. And I don't think there is anyone who would like to take advantage of that right now, so we'll wait to privilege of floor number two. And we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the special meeting on March 15th.
I didn't see anything.
I made some notes here, so let's go to line 95. It's not correct. Line 95, she doesn't believe the WVRA members would be offset by, would be, I think it would be up, could be, basically, she's trying to say she doesn't believe the WVIR members could offset the lost revenue.
That's what it should be.
Right, that's what it should be. Could, yeah, something like that. Other than that, I'm fine.
Okay, let's make that change to the, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended. Second. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Done. Minutes on the 23rd.
I have one little grammatical change on line 140. Process of accepting a road to be a town road from a private developer, inspects of the routes, construction were discussed.
Were, it is.
So here, line 46, in line 46, it says, "We ordered the belay, auto belay systems." I thought at the time we discussed this, they were actually installed, or?
No, they, they were installed between that meeting and this one.
Okay.
So they, they're.
The.
Actually, they may have been installed.
That's all right.
Yeah.
Line 55, right now, it says that I commented that we've noticed more presence by the police in VW, you know, in Waterville as opposed to on 49.
Yep.
You know, and what I really did was commend the police for the fact that they were spending more time in VW as opposed to on Route 49. So this is a positive thing, so we ought to say something along the line that we commended the police for spending more time in the, in WP.
Okay. That he's commended the more presence.
Right.
The village presence.
Right.
As opposed to on the road.
And line 137, it says, "We received a letter from Tom Myrick." Is that the email?
Yes.
Maybe we ought to say that there was an email. I, I don't, you know.
What line was that, though?
137.
137, okay.
We got an email from Tom Myrick regarding, really, Golden Heights Road.
Yes.
But it was, it is subject to all the roads up there.
Right.
Comments. Okay, good.
And the other thing we didn't have in that, we didn't include that you and I set it, set up at a point, a time to go and look at those roads. We talked about that in the meeting.
Yeah, it was during that discussion of Tom Myrick's email.
Right, but I think it should say that we were gonna go look at the roads, and we did.
Okay.
So if we could just add a line there.
So I will make a motion again to approve the minutes as corrected.
Will you second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done. All right, financial update.
You have the financials here. Brooke was just saying that she's, I haven't had a chance to look at it, but Brooke has gone through on the rec side. She's actually slightly ahead on the revenue collections compared to the same time in prior years.
Yep.
And we're underspent, so that's a, underspent where we are usually spent percentage-wise for the year. So that's good. We are definitely underspent on the, we are definitely underspent on highway, on the highway department, winter maintenance.
Tell him to return the salt.
Got a lot of salt left over?
No, actually, we, we didn't order, we didn't order.
All right.
So that's, that's why we're underspent primarily. So we're doing well there. Definite big savings on the, on the overtime budgets.
So have you taken the plows off yet?
All but one.
All but one?
We always have a reserve.
Well, I'm just trying to get an indication of what, you know, what, what they're guessing.
Yeah, we're, one plow and one sander.
Right.
Yeah, so.
I got my sports car out, so I'm predicting that it's over.
And also, the water.
I'd like to give three more weeks, I might get nine.
The water, wastewater and trash fees, you can see, we're at 26, 24 and 25 percent. So that's with the first quarter in there, so we're on target.
Okay.
As far as that goes.
Okay, I have a small question that's probably nothing. Conservation Commission, you've spent most of their money?
Yeah, they, it's a, it's, it's their annual dues. I'm gonna move that to the admin dues line because I think that's where we budgeted it. But Judy had just put it in that line, so next, next report, you'll probably see that go back down to zero.
Okay. And what do they use that $300 for?
In the past, they've used it for printing or for announcements in the paper or something like that if they had.
Conferences, if they attended.
Conferences if they need it. Yeah, there have been different uses.
All right. I didn't see anything else out of line. Bill?
Nope.
Margaret?
No, I have no questions.
Great, we'll move on from financials. Good job, Keith. All right, we'll go to department heads. Brooke, would you like to start?
So, auto belay systems have been installed and it's awesome. It's made climbing way more available to all the programs at any time during open gym, during after school, just a lot easier now because you only need one person to be there instead of three people. It works really well.
It does, so if you fall off the wall, it catches you.
It catches you. It's amazing.
Is there a weight limit on that?
There is. It, the, the suggested weight range is 22 pounds to 370 pounds.
Yo. You're a big person.
That's a big walk climber.
So, we're pretty safe there. We're gonna go with 25 pounds, just in case parents have a fudge or something like that, so. But, yeah, it's really pretty awesome.
Good.
We also got some new harnesses that are one size fits all, and you don't have to double them back because with the old style that we had, you had to double them back for safety or else they weren't secure. And these are, they're made for gym harnesses, they're, you can't mess them up, really. So we're, I think, on the climbing wall front, we're, we're in a new place, so that's great. I've also talked to WVRA about the possibility of our, you know, turning in more climbing wall to be paid back, we'll probably increase, so.
Great.
So we'll see how that goes. Our online reservations are coming in with our new system. We're sort of working out the kinks. We've invited everyone to become a member. I see Margaret came, you're a member now.
I am.
Or have an account, we've created an account on our online system, so we included that last week and we have just sort of a rash of people doing it, so that's great. So the more we can get people to do that, the better. Part of, part of that creating your own account, there's a waiver. So what, you can't, you can't create your own account without signing two waivers. One is a fitness waiver and one is a, you know, general rec waiver. So that's a really good way for us to just kind of cover all our bases because honestly, we don't always catch them when they come in. They either skip the sign-in spot or they sign in for themselves and five people that are with them. So this way, each person has a waiver on file electronically, you don't have to have it in-house. Mark in Bernese is sponsoring again the race at $2,000, so he's already given $1,000, so we'll be anticipating more from.
And when is that race?
That's a fall full age race.
Okay.
And then he also, well, I don't know, I haven't talked to him specifically about the camp shirts, but last year he paid for the, the camp shirts for the kids, just we put the logo on the back of the shirt, so I'm sure he'll wanna do that again. So that's another one. Massachusetts vacation week is coming up. We have kind of a limited, just based on the occupancy and last year's results, we didn't, just don't have a lot of people coming, so we're sort of not going too late into the evenings to keep our staff on a regular schedule and we'll see how that goes.
This is, when, when is Massachusetts, next week?
It begins this weekend. It begins this weekend.
Right, yeah. This is the week that they all go south, right. Yeah, I can't imagine them to come.
Yeah, we, and we, I looked, I compared last year's numbers and then the occupancy predictions for this year and just didn't seem like it was gonna be a big deal.
Right.
We do have pickleball tournament this Saturday, so that's gonna happen.
Now, is that teams or individuals?
It's teams. Yep, teams. We have between six and eight teams participating, and it's gonna be casual, but, you know, there's a lot of input coming from the pickleball players themselves.
Now, are there singles looking for teams?
There is one single. Why, do you know someone?
My wife might play this.
Really? Well, tell her.
Who's the single?
Tom Ennis is still looking for a partner, he's a good player.
I will mention it to her.
So we'll see how that goes. And we also have a new program we've started, we're starting this weekend called Rope Swing Climb, which is kind of utilizing our cargo nets, our climbing wall, because that's so easy now, and this other rope swing, so that'll be fun. Nelson's arranging that. Summer staff, we're definitely in the full swing of interviewing, kind of racking up the interviewing part, now letting people know what positions they have, and that's looking pretty good. We're still kinda looking for one more male camp counselor, find him, but nothing yet. We're also looking into the, a location change possibility for the July 4th carnival, potentially moving it back to Packard Field, that's sort of on the table. We met with Jamie and April today to discuss the pros and cons of that.
You mentioned that you were looking for one more male counselor. Is there a reason why?
Well, the reason is because last year, I think it may have been one of the first times that, that for each camp group, there is a male, female partnership with each group, which makes the bathroom visits and everything else really easy.
Okay, so there is a rational reason why.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And we aren't gonna, we aren't gonna be able to, to do it across the board.
Right, okay.
Necessarily this year, but yeah, there, there is definitely, it's because of that.
Okay.
For sure.
All right.
And if we can't do it, everything's still fine, you can, it's just kind of the optimal situation. And we do have some boats arriving today here, some sixty-five.
Ice is out, right?
So the boats will be open this weekend?
No, it's, boats are arriving, no, no, definitely not, definitely not.
Not until, we still have boards out. Not until Memorial Day.
And that is it.
Great.
Okay, great.
Brooke, I saw something interesting on the schedule. I think it's later this year, but are you doing a collaboration with a hiking group or something like that? There's some special events on there.
Through.
I don't remember the name.
Oh, Go Buddy.
Huh?
Go Buddy?
Yeah.
Yes, we are gonna be working with this new bike touring company who does, basically, they'll come here, we'll help transport them to a spot where they have a sag wagon, they have bikes, and then they go on this big bike tour. We have three different ones. One includes yoga and, you know, it's like a four or five hour event. They offer lunch as a part of that, and then they drop back off at, at the rec department. So that'll hopefully attract, I mean, it's a little more expensive, but it'll attract people that really wanna do sort of some road biking but aren't really confident enough to do it on their own. They're not terribly expensive, but yeah, if you're looking at like $150 to $350 depending on the tour.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Sounds, sounds good. Yeah.
All right, we'll move on. Dave, you gotta be somewhere, so should we take care of you?
No, you can take care of me on the phone.
All right, well, we have, we always have extra stuff to talk to with Jim, so whatever.
That's right. He volunteered me to go first, I like that.
So you wanna talk about item 7C, the rate change right now with Dave?
Are we waiting for Chris for the public safety?
No, he, he's filling in for Chris.
Okay, so we can do both. We can do public works on the region.
Now, just so I'm clear, after having read this, this is not what we're charging the Forest Service. This is what, what policemen get when they go on special duty.
Yeah, but it is also what we do charge the Forest.
Well, the Forest, yeah, but it doesn't go into the towns coffers. I mean, basically, we're saying, "You wanna hire one of our police people."
A little of it goes into our costs.
Oh, it does.
The Forest Service gives us a stipend every summer to patrol as a, as a patrol activity for campgrounds, triple I road, pull-offs.
Great, okay.
Any patrol activities that we do in the forest, so they give us.
That's what we get and that's what the officer gets.
It was roughly.
Forty-five, twenty.
Forty-five, twenty.
Is the breakdown.
Yeah, but the, the average from the Forest Service we get.
Oh, about 3,000.
About 3,000.
3,000 a year.
3,000 a year. The contract runs from May till September. So what we do is we take what our hourly rate is and divide that up through those months and break it up through, you know, an hour every weekend evening that the patrol guys dedicate to Forest Service activities.
Okay, and is, is there extra money for rescue, or is that resc?
There is. If we do rescues during that contract period, we can actually charge them for the hours when we have search and rescue time. Yep, we do.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that.
This is what you're proposing? I'm just curious, what does an officer get now?
Officer gets 32.50.
Oh, so we're way below.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah.
We're the lowest.
Yeah, I did a survey, that's based on a survey of all the rafting chiefs.
They have, they have.
Sure. So we, we found that we were quite behind.
Yeah, no, I, I have no problem with this. All right, do we have to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to change that.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to change the rates for private duty, well, private duty services. Is that the right way to phrase it?
Special detail.
Special details.
Detail rate.
To $65 an hour?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And how are we doing on the regular public safety stuff?
Do well. The mountain requested a burn permit for big brush piles that they had cleared for Green Peak, so if you do see some smoke coming from the side of the.
Could you define what you're saying by they cleared for Green Peak? Is this something new or is this just?
No, it's what, what they had previously cleared last, before the season last year. So the remnants of, whatever you wanna call it, the track or portion of that trail or that run.
Do they need a, a burn permit also from the Forest Service? I'm just curious.
They do.
They need both.
Yeah, part of their request, the Forest Service made them come to us to get a local permit.
Okay.
And we've started burning our stuff, right? We've started burning when the boys were doing it the other day.
Yes, yep.
Yep, other than that, you know, this is, that time is a season.
Pretty slow.
Yeah. Focusing on, we have the fishing derby, that permit's been submitted, you know, getting ready for all the pre-plans work and we're, to get that stuff, getting ready to get that planned. Field training's going well with Ian McKinnon. We've got a regular, regular schedule set up with him. Can be a little challenging at times when the traffic count is very low. We're being very creative.
So if you get stopped, it's just training.
You know, training.
Go do donuts.
But there's plenty of other stuff other than just beating that we can work on, so.
Why don't you get that, your car out?
Oh, you, you want me to, you wanna go fast just for the heck of it? I'll go through town at 60 miles an hour and see if anybody comes out.
White Porsche. Anything else going on?
That's, that's about it.
Staffing levels are good. We're looking confident going into the summer. We've got enough.
Yep, we've got enough. We're obviously, you know, we'd like to have, you know, one or two additional part timers. We're about all we can handle now with one currently in training, so we've kinda held off on moving forward with the next process. We've had a few applicants, but we're gonna kinda, kinda wait till.
Good. The new cruisers here or any times to?
No, I haven't gotten any update from either, either one. They told me two weeks ago would be about two weeks before they knew when a potential delivery date would be, so I'm still waiting to hear, to hear from them.
Good. Anybody got anything else?
Nope.
All right, great, well, thank you very much. Now we'll move over to you, Jim.
Well, things are fairly slow in our department as well, waiting for things to settle down groundwise so we can, there's a, there are several manholes in town that I'd like to get at and rebuild. And just waiting to take a look and see if there's any others that are popping up to add to the list.
Is pretty much the frost heaves over now?
It should be.
Yeah, okay.
Things are starting to settle down. As things dry out this week and next week, we should be back to normal. There is, excuse me, in some areas in town, the shaded areas, there still is some frost left in the ground.
Oh, hmm, okay.
Garbage truck is definitely going to be worked on starting the 25th of this month, and we're anticipating we'll have it back within two weeks. And we do have Witcher is going to be collect, doing the collections for us during that two-week period, so that's all set. The new tractor, if you will, will be Friday afternoon, delivered Friday afternoon, so I anticipate we'll be cutting grass next week, so.
Right, yeah, for the grass would just grow, right?
Yep, so that's good news, and other than business later on that we have to take up, I don't have anything unless you do.
All right, question for you. Mark and I did a drive around and one of the things that I noted.
Yeah, sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, well, one of the things I noted from new eyes looking at things clearly is some drainage issues. Now, do we have a plan for the summer to address some of these drainage issues when we have some downtime? Is that, so if, if that, that could be put in place and we, I could bring everybody else up to speed on?
Yeah, where was the, where were all the drainage problems?
Greeley Hills, Snows Brook Road.
Oh, a whole bunch of roads.
Yeah, a lot of them, and Mark was explaining to me how the drainage works. Beam Bender up at the top there, Cascade Ridge.
Yep.
And some of the stuff, it looks like it's a reasonably easy fix.
Yes.
It, it doesn't involve much more than going in and re-cutting some lines and moving some rock around.
Okay.
As opposed to, you know, having to hire someone to really go in and do some stuff.
Yep, we've got, you know, obviously, we have a grading bucket for our, our backup, so we can go in there and we can, there's, there's several areas in town.
Right.
As soon as the, I have to make some space up in the lagoon area, and of course, we're gonna have a, a project that we're gonna need stoppile area for, but I'm gonna stop bringing in some material as soon as the ground dries out and hardens up a little bit to do some of those exact same things.
Okay, and I think the other thing that we came away from, with, from our little tour the other day is we need to get a dialogue going with the mountain about what they're doing to the roads with the cross-country cars.
Cross.
Where, you know, that you can see where we're really being affected by allowing them to kinda cross.
Yeah, chewing up the asphalt, right?
We should just get a dialogue.
There's several, several spaces, and this goes back, we had that dialogue about three, four years ago.
Right, and they agreed to put, I thought they had agreed to put harder rubber cleats on them.
Or do something.
Well, they, they took the cleats off is what they agreed to do, and I'm not sure they've done it. The ice cones.
They left the cleats on because they have.
Right, I'm sorry, yes.
The ice box was supposed to come.
Okay. And I don't know that they.
They did, actually did it, yeah. The other problem we have, well, it shouldn't affect the roads all that much. As I say, there was very little snowpack this year, so, but then again, there's normally not snowpack on the roads anyway.
Not, not, unless we're not doing our jobs.
Right.
And the potholes are back on the West Branch.
Yes, they are.
Yes.
Yeah, which, as predicted, right.
And I have the solution.
And what is that?
It's sitting right down in the garage. It comes in about an 80-pound bag.
All right.
Lynn?
It's gotta dry out a little bit.
It's like the swallows returning to catastrophic.
Yes.
Also, did I miss anything from our tour? Did I cover what we?
Well, the Golden Heights Road, we did get the, we did get an estimate.
Right.
It's gonna be about $32,000 to fix the damage from the top all the way down, including drainage repairs, a new culvert at the bottom and everything. So that's, that is under drains and everything. So both Jim and I have talked about it, and we recommend, given that there is the construction planned in there.
Right, that we would put.
That we would just, with that amount of money, and, and do a project for the CIP.
We, we had talked, I think, I think in the selectments meeting about doing some test pits to see whether.
We did.
They did.
And what did they show?
That the wrong stuff was put in there.
Do, do they or not? Unclear or?
I will not, I will not say, let's just put it this way, that there probably was an attempt made to put the proper material in there, but it, it's not really that good.
I, I, I still think we should have a discussion with Mr. Cantlin.
Okay.
I mean, you know, basically, they've given us a, you know, he's given us a road that doesn't meet specifications. I, somehow, that, you know, I mean, we took, essentially took their word for it.
Unless our guy signed off doing the construction period on it.
Well, even, you know, I don't know what you, I don't know what you do in this case because we don't really, we may sign, but, but we don't actually inspect. I mean, we're taking the word of the individual here that the road was built to town specs, and we're, we're questioning now whether it was ever built to town specs.
Well, is it town specs or specs for the environment? See, what is the town, I don't, you would know better than I would.
There is a roads, but there's a specification that says X must be done.
And whether or not that was met just by digging those two test pits is very, very hard to determine.
It's unclear, right.
It's unclear. However, given the conditions of the.
And, and the fact that the, that the other road they constructed, Piper, in that same development, clearly did not need specifications.
Right.
And had to be rebuilt before it was turned over to us.
So there's a.
That we have some reason, oh, yeah, right. The, the, the original road going up Moose Run had need to be rebuilt. So, because Piper, you know, I'm not saying it's Cantlin's fault, but it was his contract to Piper, and, and I'm wondering whether, whether, you know, you look at this, this should, you know, this should, really shouldn't happen.
Right.
Right?
You're right, I didn't realize the other one.
Yeah, according to Tom Myrick, the, you know, had, there was work that had to be done on that.
If I can add to the mystery, water and sewer extensions were done after the fact, after that road was built, that section of road, and.
Which section of road are we talking about?
Golden Heights.
Golden Heights up to that intersection. Infrastructure was put in, and what I believe is happening now is when they ran the sewer main all the way up to the way a flat mountain road comes in, I believe that there is water, of course you put sewer line in stone, and I believe that the, the water, the groundwater is actually coming down and following the sewer line, and that's why now after the is actually coming down and following the sewer line, and that's why now after the fact, I think that under drains would be a good idea.
But should the person who put that sewer line in realize that water would run down underneath?
Sometimes it does, and sometimes it doesn't.
Should it have been a consideration for someone who knows what they're doing with putting in roads and putting in sewer lines to look at this and go, this could be a problem?
I will say yes to a consideration, yes.
Okay, so we might want to have this discussion with Piper as well.
I, I believe we also need to let the planning board know about this particular incident on Golden Heights Road, and the reason I'm saying that is in the future, if we get around to this issue of accepting roads again, we, we maybe should be requiring some kind of a bond for some period of time that upon acceptance of the road, that for X number of years, it will be, you know, be in reasonably good shape, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Don't we have one for a minimal period of time that, I remember-
Only a year.
Yeah, that's what I mean, that's useless.
Well, we've had-
We, it's not, because we do have some leverage with future development.
It should be more than a year is what I'm saying.
Oh, no, I don't know what the timeframe would be.
Right.
Right.
All right, so bring that up with the planning board?
But I mean, here, the taxpayers are gonna have to, right, we'll bring it up, are gonna have to fork over thirty grand to fix something that, that's clearly not their fault, the taxpayers' fault.
Okay.
All right, so I think we ought to let, I think we ought to tell Mr. Cantlin we're kind of dissatisfied, you know, we're not really thrilled about this.
Yeah, okay, I'll talk to him about it. All right, so is that it for me or Jim?
I agree with your recommendation that we hold off, well, I, I don't know, I'm assuming, you know, I was reading the minutes. The implication was they were, were in fact planning to build that second condo building soon. So let's see if something happens here.
All right, that it for you, Jim? Anything else you'd like to bring to our attention?
Are we gonna talk about Dana White or separately?
We've got a separate line.
Okay, fine.
He mentioned that the trash truck was out, Engine Two will be out also Monday.
Right, yeah.
For the home repairs.
And how long is that gonna be gone?
Uh, don't know yet.
Three, I think Chris said thought three weeks.
Okay, but we still have Engine One?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the latter.
Yeah, all right, let's do a quick calendar review. I'm out next meeting.
That's unacceptable. When is the next meeting? The twenty-seventh? I am here on the twenty-seventh, Mark.
I am here.
Well-
Have a great time.
Right, we got two out of three.
What day is that, Wednesday?
That is the last Wednesday of the month.
Yes, I should be by three o'clock, I should be on the third or fourth hole.
Oh, a real, oh, okay, third or fourth hole where?
I think I'm playing the Fazio course.
Oh, okay, wow.
On Hilton Head.
Yeah, well, sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me, too.
I, I noticed that Alcest is-
Opening this weekend.
Well, they're opening, they're playing golf on Friday, but the driving range is open today.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, some friends have been playing now White Mountain.
Yeah.
Which, we'll see. I'm, I'm still indoors.
Yeah, right, well, I think the season's moving outdoors now.
Yes, all right, great, so let's move on to the Noon Peak Road bids. Mark, provide us with supplemental information this afternoon.
Yep, we received the third bid, so we have the seventy-two, seven-eighty, and the seventy-three thousand dollar bid, and the eighty-five thousand dollar bid.
And the, and it turns out that Johnson had made a mistake, what they come back and say?
In the, the amount of material, the dimensions that he used
Right.
were twenty-two, twenty-foot paving instead of twenty-two feet, and then he was going to a depth of-
Well, yeah, the big, the big part was the, the six-hundred-and-twenty-feet-by-twenty-foot boxing out instead of the by twenty-six-feet boxing out, that was the stabilization fabric, but he did correct that, and-
And that's what took his bid up to seventy-three.
Yep.
Okay, all right, so what are you recommending now?
The recommendation is to go with Dana's bid, it's a few hundred dollars difference, but he is the low bidder for the same apples-to-apples.
All three are-
And all, well, the first two are within a couple hundred dollars.
No, but I mean, a qualified contractor.
And they're all qualified to do it.
Okay.
Plus Dana White's doing work on Windsor Hill, so he'll be in that general area. And all three of them were bidding, knowing that we want the work complete by June twenty-fifth, so we'll have it done by the Fourth of July, which is a real plus from our standpoint.
And the, and the challenge, of course, during, if it was during a busy time, would be to get traffic through the area.
Yeah, right, so we wanna get it done before the Fourth.
Okay.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept the bid of DA White excavating?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid of DA White excavating for the repairs on Noon Peak Road.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done.
While we're on bids, when, when is the bid due back on the water sewer?
It, it's actually being reviewed by Rural Development and DES right now, the bid documents.
Oh, so we haven't even put it out for bid yet?
No, we haven't put it out yet, so we're looking at a, on the, it'll be on the street by April twenty-fourth, and the bids will be due back for your second meeting in May.
Okay.
That is, that's still giving us enough time to get the work complete on the installation of the well and everything that we need to by the end of September. And Joe is, Joe is-
Construction statewide is busy, not busy?
Not busy.
Okay.
And I would like to comment just on the two low bids that we did get from the Ellie Johnston and DA White, that on a seventy-five thousand dollar contract, you're within two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars of each other, and they both do a lot of work for the towns, so I thought that was quite telling of the types of contractors that we get to work for us.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, you know, I'm gonna take it, we take your recommendation, two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, it's not enough to sway a bid one way or the other.
Between the two, it's really a coin toss.
Right.
And the bids are actually lower than they were at this time last year, because we had ended up, we had budgeted the eighty-eight thousand for the work, so it's actually, it's actually a good sign.
Well, eventually that money's going to Golden Heights Road.
Probably.
All right.
Well, the other thing, before we kill Golden Heights Road here, the other thing we ought to take, I'm not sure, even with all of those problems out there, that that's the number-one priority. I mean, there are other roads that are in just as bad shape as that.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, so we, again, we should be prioritizing, I mean, there, there isn't a lot of people up there, you know.
Yeah, my, by my count, there was one condo used there all winter.
Yeah, there was.
Right.
So, and that's another reason to wait until after they get reconstruction done.
Okay.
Yeah, all right.
All right, let's get to the telling the appointment of a Penny Baker Solid Waste District representative or two.
Or two.
Mike, do you wanna walk us through this?
Well, we, we, there is a new executive director for the district that Jim and I-
He's the head garbage man.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that we have dealt with before on other projects, and Jim and I, at least for the short term, would like to be the two representatives until we see how the district is running under the new director. Because we do have a vote, we do have a voice on that board, and if, if it looks, it's been pretty benign for the past several years, so we've let our operators be on the board, but I, I just think that in case-
What do I tell this, this organization to?
They're the ones who coordinate the transfer station or the, the dump-
Household-
At, at Bethlehem, and they do the household hazardous waste collection and-
For, for us, it means the household hazardous waste collection in a, in a, in a way for us to get rid of the stuff that we don't accept, but we do get.
Could we actually have them come down here and do one of those for us?
No.
Okay, why not?
The, the household hazardous waste program that they put on is through a grant from the state of New Hampshire, and they are, they run two programs, one in, one in Littleton and one in Plymouth, once a year, each place.
But could we go to the Plymouth one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Plymouth has taken my stuff.
We're part, you could even go to the Littleton one, because you're part of the, I mean-
Oh, okay, see, I didn't know that, I'm used to Massachusetts where you have to have the specific dump sticker to get into.
Not for the household hazardous waste collection.
I'm fine with, if you wanna, I mean, it would seem to me, you know, it'd be nice if we could encourage that organization to, to look for ways to, so that towns could cooperate a little bit more on solid waste.
Yes.
You know?
Yeah, and they do, they do contract with Casella about our, our C and D rate for the per-ton price, so.
Okay, so hopefully, we can kind of steer them towards recycling also.
All right, well, I'll make the motion to appoint you two to the Penny Baker Solid Waste District.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
You guys are in. All right, the Health Trust rate notice, which is good news.
It is good news, so our rate came in at five percent instead of the guaranteed, well, the guaranteed maximum was seven-point-two, seven-point-five.
Okay, all right, all right. All right, got it.
So we were, we saved, I did the calculation, we saved about three thousand two-hundred, three thousand three hundred dollars for the year, and that is a combination of, it's only half a year, right? Because it goes into effect on one July, and the opt-outs, you've frozen at a, it's now no longer a percentage, so those numbers didn't change on the, the budget estimate. So that's, that's why it didn't come out to exactly six point, I mean, two-point-five percent savings.
Okay, excellent, very good, water and sewer bill commitment.
All right.
This is a form we sign four times a year?
Yep.
And there are no changes to this from the last time?
No, that, there's no, the financial report shows you that it's twenty-five percent of our budget estimate.
Just asking. All right, we are all signing that, do we have to make a motion to do this?
No, that's fine.
All right, that one is done. All right, let's talk about the billing of commercial properties.
Okay, so you have five quarters worth of information here. Quarter one of two thousand fifteen was all, we, we didn't have all of the meters installed, so we used the quarterly average, and that's what that first sheet shows you.
Quarterly average.
Which was the three prior years, so twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, we averaged those, and we charged the quarterly average, and that, that was something that you voted to do in the interim.
Yes, I remember that, but back up even before then, before the new meters.
Correct.
Commercial properties had been paying based on usage?
They are, they always have been.
Always have been paying.
Always have been.
Okay.
They, we had mechanical meters that were installed, I think, twenty-five years ago or so.
So these are just more accurate meters?
So the, the new meters are, are more accurate, and so when we made this transition to the new meters, we started this quarterly, when we started replacing the meters, because we couldn't do them all within a few weeks, it took several months to get the new meters installed, we set up the system of using this three-year average for billing the commercial meter, or commercial properties. Additionally, we wanted to gather information on the actual usage for a one-year period you voted to do, before we decided how we would proceed with the billing after that.
Well, so there's two, there's commercial residential, I thought primarily we are concerned about the residential. Commercial has always been based on usage.
That's right, that's right, but we also wanted to see, once we put these new more accurate meters in, what the actual water use was, because we always felt that the metered numbers that we were getting from the old mechanical meters were probably lower than what their actual use was gonna show.
So is there a big, is there one or two big losers here?
Well, if you go-
It goes all over the place.
It's kind of, if you go to the fourth quarter of two thousand fifteen, and you look at the last, or I'm sorry, the third quarter of two thousand fifteen, you look at these three quarters, those red highlights are, are the properties whose bills would be higher than their three-year quarterly average.
And this is a quarterly number?
This is a quarterly number, so those are the amounts that they would have paid more.
Or less.
Well, yes, and then there are some, the, the non-highlighted ones are the amounts where the property would have paid less, and you see, there are some that are consistent, but like Mike says, it does vary quarter to quarter. I don't know exactly why, there, there are several reasons, it could be businesses different, it could be, you know, they did maintenance and, and put in more efficient fixtures.
Or we have dormitories that are empty, we have tennis courts that don't use water during the winter, we have-
Well, those, those numbers, yes, those are gonna show up every year, but, and that's why the tennis center in the fourth quarter is zero, it's always zero.
Right.
But there's no, so there would be no difference in that, but, but for these that are two-hundred, three-hundred, four-hundred dollars different, I, you know, I can't explain month or quarter to quarter why there's substantial differences.
So what is your suggestion, Mark?
Well, we are losing the twenty-three-hundred, twenty-five-hundred dollars, and I say losing, we are not billing the usage in the amounts of twenty-three-hundred, twenty-four-hundred dollars per quarter.
And that's based on the averages, it's not just specific accounts.
That's correct.
So if we go to a straight billing thing and get away from the averages, our revenues will go up about twenty-five, twenty-three to twenty-five hundred a quarter.
Correct.
I think that's what we do.
Yeah, I, I, there will be some, now, what I'd like to do is send letters out to each of these businesses, here's what we anticipate your change is going to be.
On the last averages.
That's right.
And it's gonna wash, because some people will-
Some will go down, some will go up.
But it's consistently showing about a twenty-three-hundred-dollar negative flow to us on what we could have received.
That's right.
So the question is, do we, we now abandon going lower versus the three-year moving average or actual use?
That's right.
So we've had, is it two years?
We have a year of, we have a year of data now.
Okay.
That's showing us these changes, where these changes, where we can expect them.
Yeah.
And I, I think this is about what we expected would happen, we expected some would be higher, some would be lower, and that's what the readings are showing us, the readings month to month are pretty, are very consistent. The system does show us if there are any meters that, that are questionable, and, and Robbie goes out and inspects those to make sure that they're working correctly, so the meter, the meter readings that we are getting now are accurate.
Yeah.
So within the last year, we've, we've found those that were causing problems and gotten those fixed. The, the second part of this is the other four that are at the bottom of each of the sheets, these are-
You know, before we get off of this, and maybe I'm reading these wrongs, but if I look at the third and the fourth quarter, there's some in here that are just hard to explain, the Snowy Owl laundry room in the third quarter uses none, zero, and then the Snowy Owl laundry room in the fourth quarter uses nine-hundred dollars worth of water. What is that? What, are we just not? It's like we didn't build something, I mean, it's like the-
The quarterly, or the, well, there, there was, there was a quarter, there was a meter that was malfunctioning in the third quarter that we, we ended up, and that's why we built them.
The Snowy Owl has really got some big water built, yeah.
Right, but they, they had, they had a malfunctioning meter in that third quarter. So what we did was, we agreed with the Snowy Owl to bill them their quarterly average.
Right, okay.
Okay, rather, because your guidance was to build a lesser number, too, right?
So those zeros, those zeros. I'm just trying to figure out what's gonna happen going forward.
I would expect that they would be up in this seven, or this very high.
You see, the difference to bill in the third quarter was only fifty-nine dollars. The difference to bill in the fourth quarter is twenty-four hundred dollars, and which is, which is in the range of a twenty-five percent increase. Which, is it the fourth quarter you believe is the more accurate numbers?
Yes, because they have taken on doing linens for other properties.
Well, no, I'm just saying all properties, if I look at everything.
Yes.
The fourth quarter is a more accurate representation of what's gonna happen here.
No, the fourth quarter, the fourth quarter is the winter season.
When it, when it went here and stuff.
The first quarter is the other half of the winter season, so you have fluctuations in population that's causing-
Right, here, here's my only point, here's the only point I'm trying to make. If, if the fourth quarter is more typical of the different, the, the, there, the, the sum total of what's billed versus difference of the readings was almost twenty-five percent increase, twenty-five percent increase in the amount of money we're gonna collect, and if that whole- And if that holds true, so that out of commercial customers, if we switch over to meters, we're now going to be getting about a 25% bonus, I'm not so sure that I would, I, I'm not interested in collecting necessarily more money out of commercial properties.
Okay, so-
I mean, because the rate we're charging per gallon is based on what? I mean, it's, it's just an old historical number, right? It doesn't represent the cost to make water or anything like that.
If you look at our his, it sure does. If you look at our historical costs, operating and capital costs, the water department has come pretty close to breaking even historically.
Yeah, but I don't know, what I wanna make sure is that's also true for commercial. Because what you're, what, it gets overwhelmed by the residential, I think.
Oh, absolutely, it's-
Right. So I, all I'm trying to say is, I'm not trying to get, I'm, I'm trying to charge the resident, as we go to commercial and we charge them based on usage.
Yeah.
I don't think we should, we should charge them a fair amount, so that if they're 20% of the water usage in town, they shouldn't be paying more than 20% of the total bill for the water department. Do you hear what I'm saying?
Understood, right, yeah, I see what you mean.
And if that's, and if it turns out that, that with meters now, whatever our old rate was, was no good.
Right.
And we're collecting more money, I don't think that's fair.
No, I see what you mean. Now-
And I, I don't know how to, I can't check that from this.
When you say 25% increase-
I'm just looking at the fourth quarter.
The fourth quarter.
When you build $8,000.
Yes.
But the difference to the billing was almost to 2,400, so I assume under the new system, you'd build 10,000.
That, we would, right there.
We would have built 10,000.
10,396.
And I'm just saying, you know, so we're, let-
But, but Bill, the, the $8,000 number is artificial, because the $8,000 number is every yellow number, highlighted yellow. So sometimes it's a quarterly average and sometimes it's an actual usage, because we're choosing the lesser of the two.
Alright, let me, let me try it again. Here's what I wanna make sure, I don't have any problem with agreeing that we're gonna put this rate in.
Yeah.
But we need to come back and look at the rate per gallon after this all settles out, to make sure the commercial customers are paying only their fair share.
They're actually paying less. You have to compare the 10,396 to the 10,868. That is the three-year average.
No, no, I think Bill's talking about something- I'm talking about something kinda different. You're talking about cumulative with all the water that comes in the gallon. When you, and we, we, we have these old rates, they've been in effect for a long time.
Correct.
Alright, all I'm saying is, is now that we have our more accurate meters, alright, that when we get some history of the new more accurate meters, we may have to, in the future, adjust the rate if we find we're collecting too much or too little, compared to their percentage of the total usage.
That's right, and, and that's what I'm saying, is their percentage of the total in the fourth quarter of 2015
Right.
was virtually the same as it has been for the-
And what is it?
It's 10,000 out of, I can tell you that number. Hold on just a second. It's 10,000 out of-
Oh, so I'm just looking at the wrong, okay, you're saying the difference to bill-
Exactly. Is the quarter, you've gotta take the quarterly average number and compare that to the total to bill. Okay, and that difference is only $500 difference. And it's actually less than what they were paying before over the last three years.
I, I understand what you're saying, Mark, and I think, I think I know what Bill is looking for.
And the 10,000, I can tell you the number. Hold on just a second.
How much were the ton of water bills? So you're saying the sum of winners and losers in the fourth quarter essentially came to nothing?
That's right, absolutely.
Then what's the negative 2,351? That's only the-
That's because we billed the yellow highlighted numbers, negative, that, that's the lowest, right? And what we would have billed if we billed their, their actual usage.
Right, but when we're not gonna get that, because the guy's in white, we're gonna get less money from.
That's right. That's right, and the difference is only $500.
Okay, so it's not 2,300. Alright, alright. We'll just keep an eye on it.
Oh, I understand what you're asking.
If that amount of a difference, we're fine, alright?
And I'm just trying to get the-
Okay.
I'm just trying to find the number.
Alright, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I thought the difference was almost 2,300. And you're saying that's not the case. The difference is only about 500 bucks.
So if you go to the first quarter, the 13, look at the, the first quarter of 16, okay? The difference there is about 1,100 between the quarterly average of 14,000, right? And the new, if we had actually billed all of the actual uses, it would have only been 13,000. So they're actually gonna pay $1,000 less
Right.
in the first quarter.
Right.
And as far as percentages go, the, the $13,000 can be compared to the 68,000, which is about average for the first quarter. $68,000. Last year it was about 67,000. So they're actually gonna pay a lower percentage of the total, 68. So what's 13 out of 68? It would be 20, 15 and-
About 18%.
About 18%.
I think.
Yeah, 17. So, so their percentage of the total that we're billing is not, it's actually going down.
Alright, so-
And, and we will, I'll get those numbers for you and watch those quarter to quarter, Bill.
Okay, so let's circle back to this. And what we, we're going to do is, we're going to establish that we are going to go on commercial accounts. We will go with meter readings from now on, but we notify all commercial accounts what our plan is and how we came to the number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and you know, I would-
The, the sport athletic center is a big winner, based on what I can see. Well, when they put the other pool-
They put the new pool in that saves a lot of money, right.
And I would, I would not just notify the commercial people who are going to be spending more. I would notify all of them.
Yeah, they're all gonna be, what the method of-
That's right.
There's some periods of time they'll be spending less.
That's right.
Right.
Alright, great, so let's move on for that, and let's talk about the North County Economic Development Council.
Well, can, yeah, can we get a, because you had a vote to use the lower of the two. Can we get a vote to use the, how about Margaret?
I will move that we adopt the actual use for billing our commercial accounts effective with the first quarter,
Second quarter.
Second quarter of 2016.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm forgetting the all in favor part. It's progress, not perfection. Alright, we'll move on now to the North Country, North County?
North Country.
North Country Economic Development Council email and a meeting request from, thanks Dave. From Dave, from Chris Wellington. Has everyone had a chance to read this?
I have.
I think that'd be lovely to meet with this gentleman.
Chris actually called me today, so I just wanted to make sure that you're-
I have met Chris Wellington.
Oh, you have?
Yeah. Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, can I tie this into the R-Town grant? Because one of the things we learned, first of all, we didn't get the grant.
I, I read that.
Yeah.
And the second thing we learned, that no one in the state of New Hampshire has ever received a TIGA grant, which is the big one we were looking for. And that might be based on political power in Washington and numbers of seats and things. New Hampshire never got one, so, but what we found out with all these other grants, which we are investigating, all of the grants do, cannot be submitted directly through the town.
That's correct.
They have to be submitted through, I believe, this guy, Chris-
Not Chris Wellington, the North Country Council.
Right, so we have to come up, any grant proposals we come up with going forward have to go to the North-
Country Council.
Country Council.
The New Hampshire DOT.
And both of these things, and have to have it approved by them before it gets submitted.
That's correct.
So they've thrown another layer in at us on this stuff. Okay. And that is a New Hampshire regulation. It doesn't exist in a lot of other states. So we are learning what the playing field is.
Like the TAP grants, the, the things that we were gonna try to do with the sidewalks and, and those sorts of pedestrianization and all of that.
Have to make it through.
We, it have to be, we will be in competition with every other town in the state of New Hampshire, and then there'll be a priority list for the state of New Hampshire, which then goes to the feds and for funding.
Yep.
So, and usually it's not more than the top five or 10 projects that get funding. So it would be very competitive.
Are we, are we wasting energy here? We don't, we don't know-
I don't really know.
Okay, what we have done is, on the grant we didn't get, we're gonna find out who got the grants and why.
So why we were successful.
Why we didn't get it, so we'll know if we're in the right arena or not. Before we completely give up.
Right.
We, we might see, that we might not qualify because of perceived need and other stuff, so we're gonna spend that time. We're not spending any more money on this. This is a volunteer group where we're not getting charged for any grants that are coming up yet. Meaning our grant writer.
Right.
So-
And we're resubmitting to other organizations using the same
Right.
application that we used for the R-Town grant, so there's no additional cost with the grant writer. But there may be other organizations, private foundations and those sorts of things, that can, that we can get the funding from.
We're applying to, believe this, now, do you remember the name Kresgey? The apartment store?
Yes, yes, yes.
Kmart.
Is Kmart Kresgey?
Yeah.
It was, yeah, Kmart became Kresgey.
Yeah.
Then became part of Sears, isn't Sears also a Kmart now? The Kresgey family is, is very much in favor of signs. The Kresgey Foundation funds sign projects.
They probably will let us have an old Kresgey sign.
Yeah, just white out.
Five and 10 sign. We could put that right as we come in. It'd look nice.
So I thought that was kind of interesting. But that's, was the most viable one for today, but we're gonna keep on going. See what we can do.
So-
Okay.
Answers to these questions, I mean, these are gonna be, these are not easy questions.
Right, what are the, and, and, and what do we, you know, answer on behalf, like, what's our top three economic development priorities? Get some sugar daddy to buy the mountain and pour 50 million in, right?
So-
I mean, obviously, that's the answer. That's number one. Can we say that? But no, I think you bring it down to your basics, where we're trying to provide and provide jobs for the people in the region. Right. And, and one of the things that's interesting- Well, that would provide jobs. Oh, it would, but we, we don't wanna say it's coming from the, the mountain. Also, the academy employs more local people than the mountain does. If we looked at residents.
So when we're looking at economic development priorities, it would be like, is it additional beds? Is it, is it parking? Is it new businesses?
Yeah, but that's what I get down to. What, the, the key factor that's controlling, that, that some extent then controls the ability to further develop land or ratables in the town
Right.
is, is, is a revitalization of the ski area.
Right, right.
And a redevelopment of the cross-country areas. So it's, it's mostly, this is recreational, so you invest in those and there's a spill-out effect. I mean-
No, 100% right.
I mean, that, that, I mean, it, it gets as basic as that. I mean, you know, we could put signs up and put bike trails in. Is that gonna have a huge impact? No, no. Not, not as long as the mountain stays the way it is.
So I, I think it's, I think it's a, I think that prior to having Chris and the other folks come into town, that there be some kind of workshop
Right.
meeting between the planning board and you and
Right.
the WVRA, and that we get answers to these questions that everybody can live with, because
Oh, no, I, I understand.
Because it's gotta be-
Is this before their first meeting here, or?
That, this is before Chris comes into town the first time.
Okay, because I thought they were coming to tell us what they do, not ask us what we want.
No, no, they, they wanted, they wanted to use these questions as the basis for the meeting with them.
Okay, I didn't understand that. Alright, so I think we should put off the meeting.
Yeah, I, I don't think you're gonna be ready to do it until-
No, I, you know, even if you just take one and two.
I know.
One of the, you know, it's, it's gonna, it's, it's, it, I think the answers are fairly clear. I'm not sure that we can get everyone to, to agree to them. Is it gonna be the problem? I mean, if we get all of the interested parties in a room, are they gonna say, yeah, you're right, that's it? Yeah, now that's a tough one. I mean, it's a tou, it's gonna be a tough one, it's, you know?
And you can go with your three opinions. I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Well, let's, let's, can you bring this up to the planning board? Well, I, I'd like to, you know, and maybe this is the question we have of Chris or whoever wants to come. That they must have run into this other, you know, the towns, that, that it's not just what does the town think? You know, this is a private-public partnership. Do they want just our input, or do they want the private input too?
Okay, I can find that out.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, they, they have had to, you know, they could say, well, you know, our, our interest is in, I don't know, the college, you know, paying taxes or to stop expanding and grabbing all the land. I mean, are they,
Right.
how are they gonna make that an item without the college agreeing?
Yeah, right.
Or, you know, they just, they just care about the town's input.
Okay.
You know?
Alright, I can find that out.
Alright? Because if, if we've gotta get the consensus of input on the part of the public and the private, we got a lot of, there's a lot of work
Right.
that would have to be done.
Yeah. Okay, I'll get that answer.
Okay. Alright, so that's, and we should also address this to the court group and maybe get a quick meeting of the court group.
Okay.
Advance that as, as ahead of next month's meeting. Alright, so we'll move to the ski area sewer line special use permit application. So Mark, you fill this out?
Yep, I have filled that out and submitted it.
They, they did get back to us on the issue we raised, that, that it was not in their special use permit?
That's correct.
Okay.
It was a separate special use permit.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I noticed in the meeting in the last minutes that we said the mountain was gonna check. Okay. Alright.
Alright, and do we have to make a motion on that, or do we?
No, I just, it was for information only. I don't know when they're gonna act on it.
Okay, excellent. So we'll move on to correspondence. From Steve Doyon from the New Hampshire Dam Bureau. So what he's saying is he'll get back to us in two weeks.
Uh, which is next week.
Okay.
Good for him.
So, there's nothing we can do about that?
Based on a meeting in December.
Yes.
Yes.
But we did mention it to, uh- Tell him he could take all the time he likes.
He can have two or three years. We don't really care.
Okay, so that's been dealt with. We'll deal that. Has anyone seen the letter from Lisa Reed?
Yes.
Well, can, can I just, can we just go back quickly to Steve's, Steve's email?
Sure.
This will likely include interim operational considerations, as well as a requirement to establish additional milestones.
Right.
So just, we just need to keep that in mind.
And that's what he told us at our meeting.
Well, the, yeah, when he says additional milestones, he's talking about, he's talking about, you will have a plan submitted from your engineer by this date.
Right.
You will have, you know-
And he gave us the time to do a supplemental plan that came in a different way. And he gave us time that we told him we were putting money away every year.
Yeah.
So I consider those as milestones too.
Okay.
So I think we're on path with what he's asking. I, I have no problem agreeing to that we will submit plans. The, the issue is, if the milestone is, we will have a plan accepted by somebody. Because that's up to them. That's not up to us. But, I mean, we can give them revised plans, I mean-
I just wanted to, I mean, this is, this letter that he gives us is going- Well, I think the letter is gonna be a lot less vague.
Yeah.
I think the letter is going to require us to do things.
Well, let's see if we can meet those things. If not, we'll send them another letter saying that we'll, we'll do our best, but we can't guarantee this. We can only do what we can do.
Right.
Okay.
And there is talk, I-
And there is talk, I spoke to the people from Holderness, who you, you've spoken to before.
Yes, I have.
There's a small community group, but you know what that little golf course is?
Yes.
Mount Prospect?
Yeah, the one that's up, yes, I think I do, right, behind Holderness School.
Those people have a dam that ours dwarfs, ours looks like the Hoover Dam compared to theirs.
Yeah.
And they are going through the exact same thing as we are.
Okay.
So I'm sure there are a bunch more, and I, I mentioned this to a state senator the other day.
Yeah.
That there are a bunch of small communities going through this, and this can become an undue burden without any consideration, and I think we, hopefully we can get some dialogues going, if they come back with something that's unreasonable, if they continue to be reasonable, I think we can be reasonable.
If we can, you know, I'm not opposed to doing some work on, on the dam to make it a little bit safer, but, you know, I'm not, if we gotta fight City Hall, we'll fight City Hall on the basis of, we don't think there's anything wrong with our dam.
Right, I agree.
Damn right.
Don't think there's anything wrong with our dam.
Or plural damn rights. Okay, great, so can we, we'll move on now to the Lisa Reed letter?
Yeah.
I thought she sent us a very lovely letter, stating that she will endeavor to live up to the honor we bestowed on her for the rest of her life.
She threw a hell of a party, I'll say that much.
Okay, we'll go to tax letter certification?
Yeah, I'm just required to give that to you.